Board of Education's January 11th, 2024 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Butler.
I would like to do without moment of silence. I give them a prayer for my committee.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Unfortunately, Mr. McMillan is absent, as we've noted, due to illness, so keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Also, Board Chair Ms. Betsy Henderson, she will be here, but she's going to be late. She is with her daughter, just a minor injury, but she's at East Tennessee Children's Hospital, but she should be here sometime during the meeting, hopefully. So, but well, thank you for coming, thank you for your attendance tonight. Again, just as a reminder, this is the Board's Public Business Meeting to discuss items that come before us for consideration, so we ask you to be respectful and courteous at all times. And then, as a reminder, Knox County Schools will be closed Monday, January 15th, in celebration of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Dr. King's actual birth date was January 15th, 1929, so it is exciting, he will be celebrated on his actual birthday. And many of you also, I think, probably received a text a little bit ago that school is closed tomorrow, so I will let Dr. Reiswick speak to that.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Yeah, it's been quite a weather week, so I do appreciate that. We, our staff has really been working hard to try to monitor, monitor just everything that's gone on this week. It's been unique, so I'll start to kind of address some of the whole week, and then, I know we just did this about 30, 45 minutes ago to kind of get the word out for tomorrow, so I'll address that, too. So, I just want to reiterate, first of all, safety of our students and our staff is always our number-one concern. You know, we can't say that enough, it really is what we, what we focus on. The events of this week have been very unique. We, we are very good and very versed historically with ice and snow and freezing temperatures and even illness, that we can look at three-day trends and that sort of thing. You know, wind is hard to see, and wind is a very different factor that we've dealt with this week, and I know it kind of seems odd, but, so just kind of talking through some things, you know, I know, I know Monday night, and we start back on there and kind of take us to where we are now. So, you know, Monday night, we were following the National Weather Service and the things that were going on then, too. Even actually during this meeting, I had a few texts with some of our staff members to kind of where we were on that, from our transportation side, also from our security side. Felt very confident at that point. After the meeting Monday night, we monitored as well. I talked to a few other East Tennessee superintendents who also chose not to close, and we had those conversations. We were aware that the possibility of gusts could, could happen Tuesday afternoon, when, when we all went to bed Monday night. What we were hearing was definitely, you know, foothills and close to the mountains were places that, they were, they were predicting that, but kind of seeing what would happen. The other factor we had at that point was potential late. They were saying 3 o'clock, it's real close. You know, for us, it's really about, you know, dismissing, and again, with winds. We weren't even talking about, you know, terrible weather or flooding and all that, we were fortunate enough to have a lot of that. So, Tuesday morning, chose to go on regular time, 98% ridership of our buses, we have roughly 20,000 students a day who ride our buses, 98% picked up, things went fine, a few routes weren't able to run, but most of them were. We were continuing to monitor, I know different media outlets are reporting different things about, you know, what did we learn new at 11 o'clock? We didn't learn anything new at 11 o'clock. What we were trying to do is monitor that window of the, of when the gusts were going to hit. So, and, and the real goal on wind is there are certain levels of gusts you don't want to hit for high-profile, it's very unique, high-profile vehicles during drop-off and pickoff time, so, and pickup time. Our schools are totally fine to handle 30, 40, 50 mile-hour gust when kids are in school. What we don't want to do is have buses out when those gusts get to that level, because that's the safety problem. So, if it was between 11 and 1 o'clock during the day, we wouldn't have made any kind of call. And our hope was, waiting for that National Weather Service report, that they were going to somehow push that back, because it was talking 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock when those gusts would start, we were fine for the whole day. When we got confirmation, I think it was 11:16 when that, when that came across for us, Ryan Dillingham and Chief, who do a great job, notified Dr. Adams within 15 minutes, we were in my office, going through those things, verifying that, looking again at one more time at the reports. We moved at that time, I think, notified the Board shortly after noon, and our goal at that point was to try to get students out as fast as we could. For those of you who, kind of the public who don't see that side, there's a lot of pieces to that, I mean, I usually let you all at the Board know first, and then we've got a sequence of letting principals know, because they have to operate their schools. It's also in the middle of food service, trying to make sure everyone's got their food and their lunch for the day, making sure that's all placed, and then we have a ton of bus contractors, right, who have to fire up their buses and get them there as well. So, all that's coordinated in a short amount of time. We did that again, trying to get that dismissal, it's always hard when you do early dismissals, but we tried to get that out and get that going. And then, we actually did, we didn't know at the time, but we're experiencing somewhat of a glitch in our communication program, and, and so it was slow to go out, still wasn't a lot of time, so I'm not blaming that going, ah, that was our problem. You know, we still had a window of about, about 45 minutes to an hour to get all this messaging out to get there. We made the choice to do that soon, as to get folks and get buses off the, off the roads at that time. That night, we made the, the call for the two-hour delay, and again, we, we were on, monitoring to that point, we got, our team on a call at 8:30, and had our security team in con, in conversation, we don't, like, we don't just watch the news, right? So, we're calling the National Weather Service, talking to their meteorologists in, in Moorestown as well, and we wanted the hour-by-hour breakdown again, right? So, it's very different if wind gusts could be at 50, but they're done by 4 o'clock in the morning. So, for us, we wanted confirmation at the latest hour as possible, that they thought these wind gusts could proceed, our buses hit about 6 o'clock in the morning. So, we wanted to make sure that we were all clear by then, we were getting reports, 4 in the morning, big gust will be gone, 6 o'clock they'll be gone, so we got that confirmation at 8:30 in the phone call we made, that it would be 8 o'clock AM before they felt like that. Well, that gives us about a two-hour delay to make sure those gusts have moved at that point and to move forward. So, really, again, roads weren't a big deal, down trees weren't a big deal, like, we weren't seeing a lot of that. So, that was the reason for our two-hour delay on, on Tuesday. Looking forward to tomorrow, again, this is all wind, guys, like, we're not, we're not looking at other things, like, yeah, hazardous road, it's not. Everything projected, we started getting reports, it's a, it's a, you know, and then sometimes, weather's hard to predict in East Tennessee, I give it to all the meteorologists out there, you know, it's always, are we going to get snow, are we not, or wind's going to do this, are they not? We got the 24-hour kind of cover everything, 7 AM to 7 AM, it's going to be windy, right? And we're like, what does that mean? Is that, you know, is that in Jamestown, is that in Sevierville, is that in, so processing through all that stuff, we looked at those things today, they are calling for, the morning would probably be fine for us tomorrow. I think we could get everybody picked up and we could get going, but we asked for the hour-by-hour breakdown from the meteorologists, they gave us surface sustained winds and when those would be where they were, and then they also gave us the gust and when those start, and it sounds like what we had, when we made the call about 4 o'clock today for tomorrow, was around 11 o'clock is where we start hitting that again for high-profile vehicles, so back to our buses and 20,000 of our students that transport that way. We could get them here tomorrow, but we'd be turning back around at 11 o'clock to send them home, in hopes that we could get them off the road before the gust hit at 12 o'clock. So, I, I want to say this, totally understand, as a dad myself, that that is extremely inconvenient for families to do early dismissals, it's always tough on work schedules to do late starts and to call days off, but, you know, the wind is kind of a new creature, we haven't had a lot of that to, to deal with, but I applaud, again, our transportation team and our security team for, you know, monitoring that with us, us, you know, looking through those things, and trying to notify families as, as soon as possible, and, and trying to be, you know, good stewards of the days that we have, because we don't know, I mean, I know we're looking at weather for already for next week, we're monitoring that, we're, you know, we've seen that change, right? We, when we were looking at it three days ago, they were saying 1 to 2 degrees in the morning, now it's up to 14, so, you know, it's hard to predict, I don't want to be a meteorologist, but we're trying to do that as well, and in the meantime, keep 60,000 students safe, and trying to be cognizant of families and what they do, too. So, wanted to explain some of that, because I know there's been some, some different kinds of things and that have been out there for it, but I, I do think in the end, you know, we're blessed, our kids all got home safely through all of that, and we appreciate the patience from families and us trying to keep everybody safe.
Sorry, I was late, let me, my daughter was in the hospital, so we just came from the hospital, so, thank you, Mr. Triplet, for starting the meeting, thank you, Dr. Reiswick, for, for that. Board members, there were some changes to the agenda, as discussed at our work session on Monday night, a proposed revision was made to Board Policy J 580, which is the Student Suicide Prevention Policy. It's being considered as Item 7U, and thank you, Celeste, for bringing that to our attention and for that, appreciate that. The revision clarifies where available resources will be posted, so a version 2 of that policy is attached to the agenda for your consideration on first reading. So, again, thank you, Celeste, for bringing that to our attention and being such a great student representative to this board. Additionally, at the work session, we were asked to communicate ideas or suggestions we had regarding our 2024 legislative priorities to Ms. Cottney. She took all of the communications received and compiled a draft document for our consideration. The document is attached to the agenda, and you also have a paper copy at the table. Consideration of the priorities is Agenda Item 10E, so I will entertain further discussion or motions when that item is read. Are there any other requested changes to the agenda? Motion by Ms. Horn, second by Ms. Christie, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Special Recognition of Leading Innovators of Instructional Technology. We have Ms. Amber Moser of Learning and Development Supervisor, is she in the audience tonight? Hello, welcome, welcome, we're excited to have you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dr. Reiswick, members of the Board and others who are here. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize Knox County Schools' second cohort of leading innovators of instructional technology, also known as the LIIT group, that's L-I-I-T. In joining this cohort, interested staff members went through an application process. The members of this group were selected because they exemplified initiative, sound pedagogy, content knowledge, a growth mindset, and vulnerability. They committed to engage in growth and leadership that impacts student success, and to share and model best practices using technology to maximize teaching and learning at their schools and across our district. This group spent the 2023 calendar year, January to December, learning and networking with each other. The main goals of the LIIT group are to gain a deeper understanding of effectively using educational technology and how to share that understanding with other professionals in service of ultimately impacting our students. In addition to their efforts within the cohort meeting structures, members of the LIIT 23 cohort have been able to support our district by presenting at District Learning Day, promoting tools at our Summer EdTech Mini-Conference Professional Learning Event, sharing learning with their school-based colleagues, and through providing feedback on various procedures related to educational technology. When members of the cohort were asked to reflect on their experiences, one member made the following statement. "I gained confidence in leadership and feel as though I have valuable information to share. I was also introduced to different perspectives and tech tools that have informed my practice. I believe the individual and collective growth displayed by the LIIT 2023 group will complement our district's four priorities." And at this time, I would like to recognize the members of the LIIT 2023 cohort. We have several who were unable to attend tonight, so I will announce their names at the end of the presentation. From District 3, we have Caleb Horner from Cedar Bluff Middle. Thank you. From District 6, we have Brooke Peters from Karnes High. From the Knox County Virtual School, we have Missy Carter and Monique Miller. And those who were unable to attend tonight were Scott Bevel, Ellen and STEM Academy from District 1, Eve Bevel from Crescent Berry Elementary in District 2, Al Feldblum from Karnes High in District 6, Alicia Noe from Hall's Middle, District 7, and Katie Roy from South Doyle High in District 9. Thank you so much for taking the time to recognize these educators tonight.
We'd like to celebrate the good things. Of college.
Oh, yeah, we will go about first.
I just know I'm always in the front. And John's always in the back.
We'll, we'll go back.
Wait, what happened to this?
It's always good getting to celebrate the fun things, thanks for being here, congratulations again. All right. I just want to remind the public that the Board has had a detailed discussion on this agenda at our work session this past Monday, January the 8th. So, with that, Ms. Cottney, why don't we go ahead and get into the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 6, Consent Agenda.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie, is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7A, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy I 241, School Libraries as Amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler, is there any discussion? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know I didn't bring this up the other night on Monday, but I know we had quite a bit of discussion about this, and I think it'd be good just to let the public know why we're making the switch from the standards of the American Library Association to the American Association of School Librarians. From what I remember from the conversation, it's because the American Library Association is set standards for all libraries of all types, and we felt like it would be important to really solidify that and look to the association that's really about school libraries specifically. If I'm wrong about that, please correct me, but I thought that was important to make note. Is that correct? Is that, that was what was driving that change?
Thank you, yes, that is correct, actually, the, the way you characterized it, that, that larger entity, the American Library Association, they set standards for like a medical, medical school library, a law school library, all kinds of different, like, research and, and data centers, if you will. I think another point to make there, too, is, and to, to your point, we would probably go back and look for guidance more from the American Association of School Librarians, and, and even in that, we are not necessarily adhering to or membership, or a member of any type of association, but we do lean back into them at times for professional learning and for guidance and things like that.
Thank you.
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I recall correctly, I think one of those is under the other, so it's really one big entity.
Any other discussion on this item? Is there a motion?
That.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ms. Owen actually made that motion to approve, and that was seconded by Dr. Butler.
Oh, by Dr. Butler, sorry, I'm a little off tonight. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7B, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J 191, Misbehaviors and Disciplinary Options as Amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson, do we have any discussion on this item? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7C, Approve First Reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J 210, Harassment of Students as Amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Reverend Butler, and we do have some public forum speakers on this item. Can we go to discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we do have three public forum speakers on this item. Megan, I want to have you come, I apologize for not pronouncing your last name, I am sorry.
That's a long one.
And, Megan, if you'll state your name, county residence, and then you'll have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Good evening, my name's Megan Hazel, short Knox County resident, momed two future KCS students, and I'm an associate professor at Child and Family Studies at the University of Tennessee. No one understands the desire to get policy, language, and alignment quite like an academic. I understand the seemingly logical decision to strike actual or perceived gender and sexual orientation from the list and replace it with sex to align with some of the upstream policies. I recognize that the harassment of students policy affirmatively states that KCS schools do not tolerate harassment for any reason, which at least in policy includes gender identity and sexual orientation. But I think it's important to consider our country's sociopolitical and historical backdrop is particularly vital to consider when deciding to strike gender identity and sexual orientation from the truncated list, replacing it with sex. 510 anti-LGBT bills and eight, were introduced and 84 bills were passed in 2023, 10 of those were in Tennessee, were leading the way in anti-LGBT legislation, particularly against youth. Most of these targeted education and gender-affirming care. When it comes to LGBT youth, politicians have decided that science and medicine are not relevant to legislative decision-making, as every single reputative, reputable pediatric medicine, child development, and family science organization, including the National Council on Family Relations, to which I belong, stand by the overwhelming evidence of the essentiality of providing gender-based evidence care for transgender youth. It's important to also note that sex and gender, while often conflated, are actually quite distinct concepts, and sexual orientation even more so, so the replacement of sex doesn't really address kind of the two others that were addressed. Approximately 10% of US youth identify as LGBTQ+, including the 1.5% who identify as transgender. Despite their small numbers, peers, adults, and legislators seem motivated to make these lives, these youth lives more difficult. 84% of transgender youth are bullied or harassed at school based on a recent survey from this past year of the, of the country. Suicide ideation and completed suicide rates are exponentially higher for transgender and other LGBT youth when compared to other, to cisgender and gender-majority youth. Their risks of all sorts of mental and physical health and academic outcomes align much more closely with their straight, heterosexual, and cisgender peers when they have supportive parents, peers, teachers, and school districts that explicitly affirm them. Transgender and gender and sexual minority youth can and do thrive, we have ample research that demonstrates this, but the community context, particularly our policies, are essential in acknowledging their existence, their reality, and naming and boldly standing up against anti-LGBT harassment. By stripping out gender identity and sexual orientation from this policy, you would be doing the opposite. Replacing them with sex is not the same thing. As elected officials, you have the unique opportunity to contribute to a better school context for all youth, especially the small percentage of youth and their families who remain under legislative attack, legislative attacks that will shorten the lives of our young people. Words matter, the meaning behind them matter, what we include as exemplars in policy lists indeed matter. I urge you to stick with the current policy and keep gender identity and sexual orientation named in J 210. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Letitia Flores, if you will state your name, county residence, and you also have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Letitia Flores, I'm a Knox County resident. I'm a straight cisgendered psychologist who has lived in Knoxville for 10 years. I work to help to educate the community about LGBTQ issues on behalf of, of the Tennessee Equality Project, and I work with graduate psychology students who provide therapy to LGBTQ youth, adults, and their family members. I'm here tonight to urge the Board of Education to keep the language protecting LGBTQ youth from harassment or discrimination in their policy. And I will veer a little bit, it's not clear to many of us why they're considering, why you're considering taking away that text, so if there is any time to kind of talk about that, I would, I would appreciate hearing it, but it's very concerning for many of us to hear about this change. As you heard, already over 500 bills were lodged against LGBTQ people, including youth in the nation in 2023, a historic high, and we passed many of those laws here in Tennessee. High numbers of mental health issues are being reported among all of our youth, but especially among LGBTQ youth, specifically due to bullying at schools, as well as other experiences where they feel targeted simply for who they are. Some of you may have experienced bullying in school yourself, and so you may remember how isolated and scared you were when this happened. This is easily one of the most vulnerable youth populations in our city, in our state, in our country, and you are seriously considering still explicitly removing protections for one of the most vulnerable populations. University presidents were criticized and some lost their jobs recently because they hemmed and hawed about the hate lodged against certain groups of people, hiding behind liability concerns. The Board's decision to not leave well enough alone, to not show simple human compassion is at risk of committing the same mistake. These children are not potential lawsuits, they are flesh and blood, and they will feel the effects of the stroke of your pen. and they will feel the effects of the stroke of your pen, and taunts, and fights, and worse. So, again, I'm curious about your intentions. I don't know if this is extreme tone deafness, or is it a loud and clear message that you are sending to these children and their families that you do not value their safety? If it's a mistake made honestly, then you still have the opportunity to reverse course and let LGBTQ youth and their family and friends sleep better at night. Reversing course and leaving the policy as is harms no one. No one. If revising this bill is in fact an attempt to further marginalize and ostracize these vulnerable youth, regardless of the arguments you use, we'll all learn a valuable lesson about who you are and your intentions for protecting all of the children of Knox County. As Maya Angelou said, "When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time." So who will you be? Thank you.
Ali Chapman, if you'll state your name, county of residence, and you also have three minutes.
My name is Ali Chapman. I'm actually a Rocky Hill community resident in District 4. I'm also the chair of the Tennessee Equality Project here locally in Knox County, and we focus on LGBTQ+ policies that impact people across the state now for over 20 years. I'm here to request that you choose to support all of your students by rejecting the backward revision of this policy. By removing the terms "actual" or "perceived gender identity" and such orientation, it sends a harmful message to students and your educators who identify as LGBTQ. It also is an invitation to students and educators to harass, exclude, and bully LGBTQ people. This includes students, staff, anyone in the building. After doing this for eight years, I can tell you I've heard a lot of stories. I've done a lot of research. And as a leader in the community and the state, I work with the current administration at all levels in the White House. I've shared conversations with the Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights and the Department of Justice. I can tell you that there is a wealth of evidence that unequivocally supports enumerated protections for different classes of students. In this case, in this policy, your LGBTQ students. Meaning that rather than reducing the language in your policies to sex, you would want to actually increase the language in your policy to protect all of your students. There's no reason why you can't. It's a choice. During the most recent work session, the law director attempted to justify the use of sex and remove the terms "gender identity" and "sexual orientation" in the harassment students in the policy, and read off the Federal Office of Civil Rights explanation, which I thought was interesting because it included describing male and female LGBTQ students, students with disabilities, and students with different races, ethnicities, and also students of the same sex. So while citing this, it makes more sense to actually increase the language that's in this policy. I also reached out to two school board members in the last week and received no reply. So I reached out to one of Tennessee's most prominent public school allies that we have in the Tennessee Legislature, and I asked her for help. And she actually submitted, and I received a legislative analysis for this policy that I'm happy to share with everybody. And there was a comment on Facebook that I found very interesting that said, "The reasons why this change are moot. Rather than focusing on this language, more concerning should be whether district administrations enforcing any of these policies and how their procedures impact endorsement." This was said by one of your own board members. Someone said before, "I will echo words matter in conversation." We all know this. Everyone here is an educator, I hope by extension of being in the board. Also, "matter in debate and public discourse." If you need evidence-based guidance, I suggest you visit the Office of Civil Rights, the Department of Education, and they all have resources that you need to do right by your minority-identified students. Please reconsider adopting revised policy that appears to erase the need of carefully protected students in a large group, people here in Knox County. And don't forget that success for every student is priority number four.
Thank you. Thank you, Ali. Madam Chair, that concludes public forum on this topic.
Thank you. Moving on to discussion, Ms. Pike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think I can say it better than our public forum speakers. I had planned to say something to similar effects. I understand the justifications for this. I understand that before what we're proposing to take out says for any reason, including but not limited to. I understand that, but I do think that now is not the time to make this change, and so I don't support this.
Thank you, Ms. Pike. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sure we've all spent significant time talking to people about this policy and the proposed language change. I support a policy that is clear and concise while also being broad enough to cover everything that it needs to. And over time, a lot of our policies have become bloated. This particular policy has actually grown both better and worse over time. There was a time when our harassment policy covered only sexual harassment. So if a student or staff member were harassed for any other reason or any unknown reason, there was absolutely nothing to be done. And it was a very long time ago, but also during that time, if a person were reporting it over and over, that person would end up seeing some disciplinary action rather than the other way around. So I think that over time, we have made this policy much stronger. However, I don't always see it being truly looked into when things come up. I think it's a lot easier to say, "Well, there's no proof," than to really, really look for that proof. And I think that's something that we as a board need to hold everyone accountable for. I believe that this language change meets the requirements that I usually feel good about for being concise and clear and also being broad. I also feel like it's legally appropriate, and on Monday, I would have voted in favor of it. Since then, it's become very clear to me that this issue isn't just divisive. It's a lot worse than that. Regardless of our intent, there are a lot of people in our community who see this change as this board adopting a philosophy that we've never even talked about. And that's concerning because we are not going to be able to convince them otherwise. I've already been contacted by a person who used very specific, disparaging, concerning, and frankly disgusting, language regarding our students. The person made it clear that the revised language made her feel very empowered to say those things and to sign her name to it. And therefore, even though we feel like this language is legally appropriate and provides the appropriate legal protection, if this language change makes people feel empowered to treat our kids that way, that's something that there's no way I can support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Mr. Depler, I know we discussed this at the last policy review. Do you want to kind of weigh in on that? I know your light was on.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So since Monday, when this was discussed, I've heard from both sides of the aisle, and frankly, what I've heard is sociopolitical arguments about, you know, the merits of this and the demerits of this. And, you know, and again, I've heard from both sides. The suggestion, the recommendation was made purely for legal purposes. As I indicated Monday night, LGBTQ individuals are protected under the harassment law, have been for decades, and it's gotten even better for those individuals recently. There have been court cases come out since 2015, and as late as last year in 2020, that have strengthened those principles. So, you know, again, legally, as Ms. Owen indicated, I mean, it makes sense. However, obviously, it sounds like a lot of people are concerned about some other issues other than harassment. They're concerned about, you know, other political issues before this nation and this state and everywhere else, such as restrooms, such as sports, and things of that nature. Okay? So, but so in any event, that's what I've heard since Monday. I would also say this, again, for the good of the board, the good of the school system, one other thing that this board could do is to send it back to policy review and do something similar to what UT has done. And UT has put in their harassment policy that changes to applicable law and/or binding legal precedent may impact the applicability of certain provisions of this policy. So this board could look at something like that, you know, instead of having to change the language. That's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Depler. I know, Mr. Watson and then Reverend Butler. I think it was that order. Yep. A lot of discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for those who chose to come and speak to the issue in front of the board, and also those who reached out and communicated to us this week. Mr. Depler, I just want to confirm that I heard something correctly, I think both in policy review and the other night. I remember you stating that in other places in our policy manual, this type of language is already reduced to just the word sex. Is that correct? And or am I misremembering that? I know we had that discussion relative to Legal Guardian, but is that also true of this particular topic where there is other language that just says sex in other policies?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any other existing policies that state this more full language that we still have on the books? Or is this the only one that you're aware of?
I was reminded of that the other night, and Mr. Mayshark and I talked about that, but I hadn't looked at the policy. I believe there is one that talks about it perhaps in the employee.
In the employee section? Okay. So the reason I'm asking you those questions, Mr. Depler, is because I think the board and I think the Law Department has come to this in good faith, and I do think it was an attempt to, again, simplify the policy, as Ms. Owen stated as well. We've taken similar steps in other areas right now, like the Legal Guardian, and to be able to bring some more clarity. That being said, I was disappointed, very much so, in some of the emails that I received this week in that, just like Ms. Owen stated, for some, this change does signal something to them. And something to me that, again, to Mr. Depler's point, the board has not intended to make a sociopolitical statement, at least I hope we have not in this statement. I would hope that we would have a much more robust discussion if that's something that we were going to present in the board. But there's definitely people in our community who have watched this and who have followed this and who are making the assumption that Knox County schools, by reducing this language, is making some type of statement. And in some ways, I think, are thinking we are making a statement to that actually could feel harassing to people, which is interesting because it's an anti-harassment policy. Which is really unfortunate that we would be shifting language and people would use that as an opportunity, maybe not to directly harass somebody by sending us an email, but certainly have indicated to me they're more than willing to harass somebody in the larger community. And so for that reason, I can't support this change. I do support the idea of bringing it back to policy review and seeing if we can have a more robust discussion about what do we do need to do to shift this policy, both to continue to offer the protections that we want to offer and need to be offering, but also to make it more clear. Yeah, I don't know. It's interesting. I think the people who probably emailed me and probably all of you probably hope that their statement was a stamp of approval to all of us. At least for me, it wasn't. It was very much seeing the uglier side of what this thing is trying to actually do and to protect. So, and as a person of faith, I'm against all forms of harassment of anybody, no matter whether or not I agree with anything that you choose to do in your life or not do in your life. And by me saying that, I'm not making a statement about this particular policy. So anyway, I don't know. To me, that was really unfortunate.
Thank you, Reverend Butler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So is a motion required for us to send it back to policy review? And the reason why I think I suggest this is because I don't think we had this conversation about this doing policy review and this. And so I think we need to go back and look at it, or we may spend the rest of this evening talking about it. But I think it's worth talking about again. So is there a motion required? If so, I'd make it.
I think it would be up to, I know Susan, you, who made the original motion? I'm sorry.
Yes, Madam Chair. Ms. Horn made that original motion, and it was seconded by Dr. Butler.
Yes. And basically, what my understanding is, or my desire is, is that you make a motion and put it on the floor for discussion, because you can't discuss it until you make the motion. So, but I guess the question, I ask what the process, I need to listen to the answer.
We could do a substitute motion.
You can make a substitute motion.
So I would make the substitute motion that we send this back to policy review.
I need to... Yeah. So, Ms. Horn, I think you're... No, I'm sorry, Ms. Christie, you were next for discussion on this.
Yeah, I just think we need to make it clear how these policies end up on the agenda anyway, right? I mean, and, you know, maybe, Mr. Depler, you can speak to this, but we are required as a board to review our policies. And that's why we have regular policy review meetings. We take it by sections. And when we review a section and language has changed, or state law has changed, or something like that, we typically change our policies to reflect that. And it happens all the time. You see it frequently. I think that there might be some misconceptions that the board just randomly pulled this policy. So I do want to make it clear how this policy ended up on this agenda to begin with. Just in the, and maybe you can speak to the frequency of that, if, I don't know if it's necessary, but I do think that's important to, you know.
I think you said it best, Ms. Christie. I mean, these policies, it's the board's primary duty to enact policy. And so as such, these policies are constantly being looked at. Now, I mean, it's not just the whole policy manual every month. It's usually, you know, like you said, a section or two every two months. But, yeah, I mean, unless there's some type of specific legal change, you know, they're not just picked out. And this one in particular, to your point, was just part of a group of student policies that was up for review. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Depler. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I mean, I think I'm glad you brought that up, that this is just a policy that we were reviewing, and this is not the board making some sort of political statement. I think the public is trying to make it sound like we're making a political statement. That's not what we were doing. This is changing to, I think, if you read the policy, you see that we're not tolerating harassment of students from anyone toward anyone in any group. So I'm fine with taking it back to policy review, but I'm in favor of changing it to be a more broad term because I think it does include everyone. And I think if we start having a list of groups, that we're going to have a policy that's like 400 pages long. So I think that we need to, we really need to think about that. And, you know, as Mr. Watson said, we're trying to focus our policies so that they are as concise as they can be, but also communicate what they need to. I would certainly never want anybody to think that this board did not care about the safety of students. As Dr. Ries said at the very beginning of the meeting, we care about the safety of every student regardless of who they are. So I don't, that never came up in policy review. That was never part of it. I think in policy review, I think we did talk about that the intention was to change it to match other policies and to be in line with the policies that we have elsewhere that simply have that list that we do see in other places. So I'm fine with taking it back to policy review, but I think, you know, basically, that's my opinion on it.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Mr. Triplet?
Yeah, the truth is, the policy would have the same effect if we put a period after the word "reason." It does not discriminate in its programs, nor does it tolerate harassment for any reason, period. Harassment is defined, and go down to that last sentence. It would have the same weight. I do think that if you start getting into naming, you're just going to be... I do think that if you start getting into naming, you're just going to be, I mean, how far are you going to go with that? So, I'm content with the policy as we have edited, but if we want to take it back to policy review and have the same discussion, then, then that's fine. But, I'm, I'm content with the way it is.
I agree with Mr. Triplet. I'm fine with the policy the way it is, but if we want to take it back to policy review and have a more robust discussion again, I'm fine with that, I guess. I guess so we're now, oh, Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the, the policy, the other policy that Mr. Depler was referencing was G220, and that's actually our employee harassment policy. It'd probably be good to discuss both at the same time, because if they both have this similar language, my guess is at some point, when that came around in that section, we would have the same conversation, and we should probably address both. And to the point of some of our public forum speakers, as I stated already, I do think the intent of the board was in good faith and it was, we came to this honestly. If you, if you look at our collective histories in the U.S., certain things we say sends certain messages to certain people, whether or not we want to or not. And somebody, I think, made the point to employees, that might be LGBTQ or other, who might perceive this, and if we get into the same conversation with that policy around our employees and harassment, there's signals that get sent, right? We, we've seen that, we've seen the evidence of that. And again, like Mr. Depler said, on both sides of the aisle. So I think it's important, not only for us to bring this back to policy, but we should probably have a robust conversation about this relative to both policies, so.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. If there's no more discussion, we will vote on the substitute motion. Ms. Coney, can you read that substitute motion again?
Yes, the substitute motion was to send policy J210, harassment of students, back to policy review process.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 7D, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J212, student conduct and safe relocation of students as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J280, alternative school programs as amended.
A motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7F, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J290, unsafe school choice as amended.
A motion by Ms. Owen, a second by, was that you, Ms. Christie? Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7G, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J330, student counseling program as amended.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Watson. Do we have any discussion? Nope. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7H, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J350, school and student health services as amended.
A motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Reverend Butler. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7I, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J351, physical examinations and immunizations as amended.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7J, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J352, medication as amended.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Triplet. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7K, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J354, glucagen administration as amended.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Nope. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7L, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J355, guidelines for managing life-threatening allergies as amended.
A motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7M, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J358, adrenal insufficiency as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7N, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J360, student psychological services as amended.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7O, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J370, school social work services as amended.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7P, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J392, students in foster care as amended.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7Q, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J410, married and/or pregnant students as amended.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7R, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J421, heat illness prevention as amended.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7T, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J460, student clubs and organizations as amended.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7T, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J560, student fees and fines as amended.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
7U, approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy J580, student suicide prevention as amended.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Ms. Ms. Owen?
Um, I believe we have two versions of this one, so I would like to request a friendly amendment to adopt the version two.
Friendly amendment by Ms. Owen, second by Mr. Triplet. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed to that? No. Oh, I'm sorry, I mean, motion carries. Do we need to go back to the original? To discuss the?
Yeah.
Oh. Yeah, sorry about that.
Do you want a substitute motion?
Do you want a substitute or a friendly amendment? You agree? Okay, so do we go back to discussion on the overall? Okay, okay. Because I know Celeste had added in, or suggested that added-in language, and I, so we'll go back to discussion on the version two. So, thank you, Celeste. Is there any discussion on that item? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7V, approve amendments to reflect staff title changes in Knox County Board of Education Policies J196, admission of suspended or expelled students, J260, dress code, and J320, independent evaluations of students, waiving second reading required by Board Policy B200.
A motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Reverend Butler. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8A, approve Knoxville TBA credit union, Simply Smart Project grants in the total amount of $22,625 for multiple Knox County schools.
A motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Mr. Watson. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approve Batel Education, TSIN, STEMX, STEM Classroom Grants sponsored by TBA and BVI, in the total amount of $20,000 for Gibbs Middle School, Karnes High School, Southdole High School, and Whittle Springs Middle School.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approve American Geographical Society's 2023 GeoBoost Grant in the amount of $300 for Karnes High School.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8D, approve Delta Kappa Gamma Society International Early Career Educator Grant through the Tennessee State Organization Zeta Chapter in the amount of $250 for Moreland Heights Elementary School.
A motion made by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8E, approve National Education Association Foundation Student Success Grant in the amount of $5,000 for Pleasant Ridge Elementary School.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, approve contracts with Holston Construction Services LLC, Shelton General Contractors LLC, Skilled Services Quality Construction LLC, and Stukesbury Construction Incorporated for provision of grant-funded miscellaneous construction renovation services for the term of February 1, 2024 through January 31, 2025, which may be extended for two additional years.
A motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Christie. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approve contract with Skilled Services LLC for Phase 2 of work-based learning projects at Austin East, Fulton, Gibbs, Southdole, and West High Schools in the amount of $2,635,241.
A motion made by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approve contract with Skilled Services LLC for Phase 3 of work-based learning projects at Karnes, Farragut Halls, and Powell High Schools in the amount of $2,343,500.
A motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Triplet. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve contracts with Cross Gutter and Siding and Skilled Services Quality Construction LLC for provision of guttering and aluminum walkway covers up to $1 million annually for the term of January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2024, which may be extended for four additional years.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
9E, approve contract with Goodwin Mills Kaywood LLC for design of secure entry vestibules within KCS facilities, up to $400,000 using ESER 3.0 funds.
Motion by, made by Ms. Pike, a second by Ms. Christie. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10A, approve replacement of existing playgrounds at a quoted total cost of $1,407,291.31 at Fair Garden Family Center, Knoxville Adaptive Education Center, and Bell Morris Fountain City, Sarah Moore Green, Spring Hill, and West Haven Elementary Schools, using $250,000 of general purpose funds, up to $1,087,643.93 of donated funds from Knox Education Foundation, and $69,646.38 from the Fountain City Elementary School Playground Fund.
A motion made by Mr. Watson, a second made by a lot of people, Reverend Butler, and that was a long motion, Ms. Coney. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B, approve fiscal year 2023 school nutrition fund balance expenditure in the estimated amount of $450,000 for the purchase of three refrigerated trucks to replace existing trucks in the school nutrition fleet.
A motion made by Ms. Christie, a second by Mr. Watson. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10C, approve appointment of the Knox County Board of Education Collaborative Conferencing Management Team.
A motion made by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Pike. Do we have any discussion? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, approve superintendent's annual evaluation.
A motion by Ms. Christie, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion on this item? Seeing there's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
10E, approve 2024 legislative priorities.
A motion by Ms. Pike, a second by Ms. Horn. Do we have any discussion on this item? Yes, Ms. Owen?
I would just say that I, I appreciate it being condensed to one page. I think that'll be very helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can someone speak to the addition of the last paragraph? I don't think that was on our previous one, and I don't know who suggested it, but would like some commentary.
Right, it was, it is a new one. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Coney, for putting this together. So, I, that is one, actually, as I reviewed my notes the other night, that I had totally forgotten to mention, but this is basically if, the purpose of this is if a school wanted to do a raffle, like a, a cake.
A cakewalk.
What are they called? Cakewalk. If a school wanted to do a cakewalk and raise money for whatever in the school, this would allow them to do that. Right now, they cannot do that. So, that's, that is one of the biggest, and we, we talked about that at the TSBA convention, and several schools spoke to that, and so, this would, this would encourage the legislature to adjust that statute so that we could use those kinds of.
If it passes, I'm going to get you a T-shirt that says, "Open the cakewalk."
I love cake.
We need to.
Me too. He doesn't love cake.
Cake is one of my favorites.
Makes people happy. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was a, a bill for this last, last part of this session that did not move forward. I'm not sure exactly why. For a school to be able to do something like a cakewalk at a fair, they have to request permission more than a year in advance from the Secretary of State. It's a ridiculous process, because they consider that just like, just like any kind of, you know, game of chance. Any kind of game of chance. So, I, I guess, little ducks with the numbers on them, all of those things. So, it's, it's a pretty big deal for something very small at a school fair.
For 50 cents, like a 50 cent duck. Like, we just want like a, a dollar.
And I think, I think our legislators understand that there's an issue there, so I'm not sure why it's not being corrected.
I know. As a former VTO president who, you know, ran a fall festival and cakewalks, I fully appreciate what you're doing here, Ms. Horn. It's ridiculous.
It's ridiculous. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Reverend Butler, did you have your line on earlier? Okay. Oh, okay. Mr. Duper?
Oh, I was just going to add that I don't know how many times I've been asked, are we able to raffle an American Girl doll? The answer's no. But you can auction it. So this, this would change that.
Yes.
Yes, for the better. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so I would, I mean, you would think that they could enact something on this that would help all of us, so truly, like, let's, let's try to push for that, because that would be, for one, the ease of Mr. Duper's job and all the, all the PTO, PTA presidents, and it would be so helpful. Ms. Owen, I did have one question. The teacher evaluation portion is just lifted from last year. Is that still good and appropriate as you see it?
I think so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And thank you for those who put, who gave your suggestions to Ms. Coney and Ms. Coney for putting that together. I think there's some good suggestions this year. Is there any more discussion on this item? Seeing there's no more discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I love that we're ending this meeting on cake. That makes me happy. What? Yes, Mr. Triplet, are there any more public forum speakers? Seeing that there are no more public forum speakers, we are now adjourned.